Good evening. We welcome you to the November 2, 2022 Joint Regular Meeting of the Mayor and City Council. Our apologies for being about 45 minutes late. We are now coming, I'm sorry, an hour and 20 minutes late. My apologies. And so we want to call to order this special meeting of our, I'm sorry, called to order the open session. We welcome our audience here viewing Channel 3 as well as those at the Feldheim Library. At this time, I will ask Pastor Greg McNair, sir, thank you, from All Nations Church, he will lead us in tonight's invocation, followed by our Mayor Pro Tem to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Juan Figueroa, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody's standing, please. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this privilege to come together as a collaborative body of this great city that covers a span of over 20,000 square miles, Father God, San Bernardino, California. We love this city and we thank you for the privilege of being a part and being a resident of this city. And so, Father, in Jesus' name, we pray your divine wisdom and your guidance. We pray your divine counsel. We pray for our mayor and for the council members and for every official and officer and every person, every partner of this city that comes to see the well-being of this city, to continue to grow and to continue to evolve into what you've ordained for it to be. We pray your blessing upon this gathering tonight. And we also pray, Father God, that your resolution, that this will be a night of resolution or night of solutions, a night of collaborative discussion that would be beneficial for the entire body of San Bernardino, California. And God, we thank you. We praise you. We honor you first and foremost. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor Greg McNair from the All Nations Church. I enjoyed being with you and your church, sir. In the spring of this year, it was a great, great church. And thank you very much for your ministry to our city and thank you and God bless you and your congregation. Also, thank you to our Mayor Pro Tem for leading us tonight in our Pledge of Allegiance. This time, I will recognize our city clerk, please, to call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Ibarra is not present at the moment. Mayor Pro Tem?
Here.
Councilmember Shuret?
Here.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Here.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Present.
Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Mayor Valdivia?
Present. Thank you very much. Seeing that there's a quorum, Ms. City Attorney, is there anything to report from our closed session?
Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public, we do not have any reportable action.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, sir, you're recognized.
Okay. Thank you. Several things going on, of course, as always. First thing we want to talk about tonight, the White House is coming to town. They have scheduled a meeting, convening at Cal State University San Bernardino for November 17th. I'm not entirely clear who all is going to be there from the, from Washington, but it's going to be a pretty significant event. They've done six of these. This will be the last one that they're doing, and primarily Latino communities. It's going to include the unveiling of the San Bernardino Investment Playbook, which is something that was prepared by Bruce Katz and Jessica Lee from Drexel University. That was funded for us by the, by the James Irvine Foundation. So it'll be a, it should be a great thing to unveil for the community. Oh, we need to, do we have the, I'm sorry, Marcus, we have the... Okay, a few code enforcement successes. One on Medical Center Drive. That's been a problem for a significant amount of time. You can see the before and after pictures there. Significant upgrade near Medical Center in Highland. We've been working very hard with the property owner to get it cleared up, cleared up, and it is now in the state that you see in the picture on the right. Similar scenario. There was another case where we found a hoarding, a hoarding case essentially, and we were able to work with Adult Protective Services. We got mental health services in and also managed to clean up the property to, again, the status that you can see on the right. Another one on Crestview, a fire damaged building with accumulated rubbish, and that one also was cleared up. So going around town and doing what we can with, with our code enforcement and Public Works people to clean things up physically. Bell Street Alley, where there's an alley that was having a pretty, a pretty high, this is high compliance area, is an area that we're having a lot of difficulty, a lot of bad behavior, and Public Works went in and cleaned that alley up. And again, you can see it on the right, we're going to have to monitor it and make sure it doesn't return to the status in the, the photo on the left, but pretty significant improvement. There's been a really strong response to our small business grant program. Nonprofits and small businesses are coming in on a very steady basis. And we are, I think, on the, on the small business side, we're nearing capacity. We're also, though, seeing a lot of traffic from the nonprofit community. So the deadline is approaching for nonprofits, November 21st, small businesses on December 12th. The city's, the city's webpage has a link to access the programs. The police, Police Department participated in, at Bing Wong Elementary School for the Red Ribbon Week Assembly. It's the largest drug abuse prevention campaign in the United States. Animal Services is continuing to assist unhoused pets. They've been really busy working with the Salvation Army, Dignity Health, Lutheran Social Services, at Paracel Park, doing vaccinations and microchipping. So a really great program that is funded partially by the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, also the California Animal Welfare Funders Collaborative. Going to be continuing to do that at various locations, partly for also Loma Linda, who's now contracting with us for shelter services at our animal shelter. Blair Park, we had a, we opened a new fitness court. It is officially opening on Wednesday, November 9th at 3:30. It's an important addition, really going to support the National Fitness Campaign. It's adorned with locally themed art by, that's being installed by Darren Viegas, who's a local artist. Veterans Day is coming up, November 11th. We're inviting folks to join us at, out in front of City Hall. It's going to be at, we're going to be doing it on the north side of the building at Court Street Square. And as a lot of people have noticed, we have already installed banners around San Bernardino that honor our veterans. And with that, my report is concluded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will request councilmembers, please abbreviate your announcements since we've already started and posed on our public. It will open up for about one-minute announcements, starting with Councilman Sanchez, sir.
Yes, a couple of possible updates for tonight's meeting. Hiring fair tomorrow. The San Bernardino Workforce Development will be holding a hiring event this Thursday, tomorrow morning, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at America's Job Center at California, located at the Inland Center Mall, 500 Inland Center Drive, space 508. Second thing, Second Annual Noche de las Estrellas, event on December 3rd at the Norton and Space and Language Academy. This is one of our biggest STEM and multicultural events of the year. There will be a vendor booth, student clubs, games, STEM booths, activities, prizes, foods, multicultural events, NASA scientists, guest speakers, live stream from the UNAM, a, the prestigious University of Mexico City. And we're hoping to, and hopefully working on securing a female astronaut attendance at the event. Rob will be mentioning this, but it serves, it serves us well to repeat it. The city is inviting all the residents to honor those who have served our country with a Veterans Day ceremony at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, November 11th, at the Court Street Square. Banners recognizing our San Bernardino, sorry, veterans have been posted in downtown area. The State Bridge Suites, a new 106-unit hotel on Commerce Center near Hospitality Lane, will be holding a grand opening on Wednesday, November 9th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Lewis Carson Campus Center at San Bernardino Valley College dedication. This Friday at 1:00 p.m., San Bernardino Valley College will be rededicating the Campus Center in honor of Louis Carson. On November 22nd at 6:00 p.m., the San Bernardino Police Historical Society will be unveiling the latest addition to the Police Department Museum, a display recognizing a retired police officer, Sherri Adams, as the first African-American female San Bernardino police officer. That's, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Barra.
Thank you, Mayor. So Saturday, November 5th, there's going to be a Neighborhood Association Council President's meeting. It's going to be held virtually. For information, please email Ms. Jeanette McKegg. I have the email here, J.A.N.E.T.T.E. for Jeanette Muckkegg, M.C.K.A.I.G.C.E.P. at gmail.com. On November 7th, Monday, at 6:00 p.m., the Haynes Neighborhood Association and the San Bernardino High School Neighborhood Association will be having a combined meeting, and it will be held at the Garcia Art Center at 536 West 11th Street. And then for Muscu Piavi, they're having their next Neighborhood Association meeting on November 10th, so Thursday at 6:30 p.m. And this will be held at the Davidson Elementary School. The address for the school is 2844 Davidson. And then if anybody's interested in a cleanup, Dr. Nag is hosting their monthly cleanup on Saturday, November 26th at 8:00 a.m. For information, contact Dan at 909-883-4039. And I think, I may not be here to announce it, but on November 19th, we are scheduling another cleanup along baseline, starting from the 215 freeway, as far east as the volunteers can handle it. So if you're available and you'd like to help us with the cleanup along baseline on November 19th, it's a Saturday, you're more than welcome to join us. It's starting at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mayor. I've attended meetings recently, and one of the topics that keeps coming up with some of the residents is that of truck routes. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for providing this information, but just to provide the information to the public as well, is that we are, our Community Economic Development, Public Works, and San Bernardino Police Department, in partnership with our consultant, are working on that. We, they've shared the preliminary analysis and computer modeling for that, for the truck routes, currently refining the information to better reflect real world scenarios. And so we just wanted to provide that information to the public. I do hope, though, that at the table, we do have people who are in, in real world scenarios so that they can provide their input as well as, you know, sometimes there's things that they, they face regularly. For example, one would be, you know, station areas, where if they're not able to dock, park their trucks, what ends up happening is they just keep circling our streets, putting a greater impact on our streets and our environment as well. So I would, I would hope that there are people in those real world scenarios at, at the table, providing information in addition to the truck routes. And that's pretty much it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Shuret.
Thank you. Just two announcements, they're both related. On Monday, November 7th, at 6:00 p.m., the school district is, will host a fentanyl awareness town hall meeting. That's the San Bernardino City Unified School District has announced a virtual, virtual fentanyl awareness town hall for Monday, November 7th at 6:00 p.m. to provide information and resources on the opioid crisis affecting our community and communities. The event will feature Speaker Steve Filson from the national nonprofit Victims of Illicit Drugs, better known as, or the acronym is VOID, and Sergeant David Salger with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. And they'll be covering a variety of topics such as where to get help, what to be looking for, various things. It's a very important, very important issue that the, we and the state and the country are dealing with, this illegal fentanyl that's coming across our border. And then I was also, this came to me late, just a few minutes ago, but Steve Filson, again, he's a former San Bernardino Police Sergeant, retired. He will be speaking again, I guess, the next morning, at the Business Watch Meeting Tuesday, November 8th at 10:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. in the morning, and that's at the Arrowhead Events Center, 180 South Arrowhead Avenue. And again, I'm just going to stay on this, it's just a, it's a crisis that we're dealing with, and I'm going to keep announcing it until, until we can clean up this fentanyl problem. It'll be a long time, and so I plan to be here a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I want to highlight the wonderful work of our San Bernardino City Parks Department. Want to encourage members of the public to visit the Parks website. It's www.sbcity.org/parks. There you'll find a Miracle on Court Street, December 1st through 21st. We have exciting events planned for our community. I want to encourage the members of our public and our businesses to please support this venture and this opportunity. There's extensive information here, I won't read it all. We have ice skating rink, and that is planned, and we're excited about that. It's a $5 per person, per 30-minute session, ice skating rink, December 1st through December 20th. Also, don't forget, we have a tree lighting ceremony, December 1st, at the City Hall Fountain. More information can be found on the website, and I want to encourage you, please, as we prepare for the festivities of the holiday season, do not drink and drive, keep our city streets safe, our highways safe, and come be part of Miracle on Court Street. Councilman Reynoso, sir.
Thank you. I want to start with the Blair Park Fitness Grand Opening. That is the 9th at 5, right? At 3:30, I'm sorry. 3:30 p.m. at Blair Park. I grew up at that park. That's, it's awesome. Wanted to say Feliz Dia de los Muertos. Today is a day to honor the dead. Had some, some grape juice in honor of my father and little things like that, so I hope you take the time to remember, yeah, my dad loved grape juice. Time to honor your ancestors, for sure. It's also the second day of Native American Heritage Month. Obviously, it's the most appropriate month, so we've been celebrating things taken for a very long time. And so I want to honor them, and this is the land that we're on. The beautification of the breezeway is something to be highlighted. It's on our consent calendar, but there's been a lot of money we received in the Clean Grant Program, over $700,000, and we're going to allocate about 127 to the Arts Connection, which I know is a very tried and true organization, who's very tapped in right here in the breezeway on 4th Street and downtown alley. So expect to see that come to life. Spiker Skate Park, finally on the agenda, to approve the design, yes, a long time coming, but our skaters are being cared for. And then lastly, I want to end on the most important note, is that the election is next Tuesday. You can vote at any time at the Register of Voters on Rialto Ave here in the city. If you're not comfortable putting your mail-in ballot, in California, we all receive a mail-in ballot now. If you're not comfortable putting it back in your mailbox to mail out, you can go to a drop box. I know in the 5th Ward, the one that I'm most familiar with, I drive up the loop at the top of Cal State San Bernardino. When you get to the very top of that curve, on the left side is a little ballot box. Those are secure. Your vote will not be lost, and I know there's a lot of trust and maybe mistrust around your ballot getting there, but this is the only voice where we really see how people think collectively. When you see those numbers come back, yeah, it could be low voter turnout, whatever. People who don't vote have voted in opposition, et cetera. So take this opportunity, exercise your right. If you don't acknowledge it and you don't feel like it's important, you know the deal. You know people have died for this. So please go do it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kim Kelvin.
Good evening, San Bernardino. Happy that you guys are here tonight with us, and we do apologize again for coming in an hour and a half late, but we must take care of the city's business. So I just wanted to mention a couple of places that I have been able to, a couple of events I've been able to attend this past two weeks. So, and I want to also thank Public Works for all the cleanups that have been going on around the city. I do appreciate that. 2088 Medical Center, able to see that when I drove by, I'm like, I could tell the difference, and so I really do appreciate that. I want to also thank Cassandra Cersei for the homeless workshop that we had this past week. That was informational and good to see the plans that are going to be coming forward. I also attended the Community Hospital Subacute Center that's in my ward, and they had a Halloween event that was put on by the Honda people. For the siblings of those children that have to live there, all of the children in that subacute center are on ventilators, and so they don't get to go home. But it was so beautiful to see them be able to interact with their families, and thankful, thankful to the Honda people to come out and give them that opportunity. Did host a small business meeting in our community for the nonprofits regarding the grants and the small businesses. Enormous opportunity, you want to definitely make sure. I saw that there was 165 applications that's been received. I was told 183. So nevertheless, please hurry up because the deadline is closing for nonprofits in November and then December for our small businesses. This is an opportunity for us to give back, and we're using ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, for this opportunity. We know how tough it has been through the COVID for our small businesses. Also, attended with a couple of other councilmembers as well, Sando's Church, last Sunday, because they are creating a teen center in our city, and it's called The Hill, after Dr. Margaret Hill, who sat on our school board and county schools for quite some time. It's going to be a place where our scholars can go and wash their clothes. You don't, you never know how, how much we have, how many scholars that we have in this city that struggle with not being able to come to school with clean clothes on. This will allow them, the mayor was there, Councilman Alexander was there with me. Critical, critical, you know, things that are being taken care of there for our youth because just this week alone, we've had, lost a couple of scholars in the district through shootings in our city. And so it's important that we continue to do what we can to make sure that they are provided with some places that they can go and get some resources that they need. Had our ward's Sixth Commissioners Dinner. I'm so very grateful to every commissioner that I have, and that serve in other wards as well. And that's why we do have, you'll see on the agenda, items to be brought forward, that we contemplate, you know, seriously look into providing a stipend for our commissioners, who have to do some of the same work that we do as well, and we need them on our team. I also attended Elks Lodge, had a casino night, and I want to thank my, I want to thank my constituent Guillermo Guerrero who invited me. It was fun. And casino night, all of the profits that they received that night will be going to the Western Regionals field, and that's important, too, that we continue to serve them. And then I also attended the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, they had a resource fair this past Saturday. That was definitely a resource that was for all community members, and so I just, I'm grateful to every organization that is always trying to put forth something forward to provide resources for our community. I also want to remind everybody to please get out and vote, exercise your right, know that this is how we create change in this city as well. Get to the ballot box on Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Alexander, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to remind you that it is, there's a lot of months, we have months for everything. We have months for people who wear glasses, we have months for all sorts of weird stuff, left-handed folk, we got months. It's pancreatic cancer month, and, and not to get personal, and I don't usually get personal, but my mom died of pancreatic cancer, and pancreatic cancer is the most nastiest, debilitating cancer there is. It's, it's ugly. And I don't know what to, I don't even know what to say about that, just other than just, if you're dealing with something like that, my prayers are with you because it's, just be comfortable to somebody, say a prayer, go by, give them some, it's just, pancreatic cancer is just brutal. It's the worst form. So help somebody if you know them that are having that particular issue, their family. That's it for that. Something else, Mr. Mayor, last week, we forgot to close the meeting in honor of Chief Ben Gonzalez, so if we can...
My apologies, and Mr. Penman, you brought that to our attention, and I apologize. We'll do so tonight.
So on that, on 20th, on a lighter note, I attended the graduation of, the graduation of five new businesses, small businesses in the city of San Bernardino. They are going to do a great job. There's various types of businesses from anywhere, from flower shops to realtors, they are learning how to do great programs. I was at the graduation. On the 21st of this month, myself and Councilmember Calvin was at the grand opening of the Arrow, the line from Redlands to San Bernardino, the nine-mile stretch. It was a great opening. It's going to bring people into San Bernardino, not take people out. Yay, yay. On, on Halloween, 7th Ward had its trunk or treat. We came out there and rocked it at Arrowhead Country Club. We served about 1,000 kids. We ran out of candy when about, geez, it was about an hour and a half in, we ran out of candy. We were doing all sorts. So I want to thank the fire department, the police, the police, we ran out of candy, so the, so the police department made a run to go get us some more candy. That's how, that's how many kids we ran through the trunk or treat. So, yeah, that's right. I appreciate all those. I appreciate the Arrowhead Country Club for letting us use their parking lot, get those kids off the street, because where it is, there are no sidewalks, so we tried to get them all off. So I appreciate everybody that came out. We had some person that came from Hesperia, honest to God. She said, I said, where are you from? She said, Hesperia. I'm like, okay, trunk or treat, next year. I attended the Dia de los Muertos. Did I pronounce that right? Close? Close. Talk to me later? I take, what? The Day of the Dead. Well, I try to do my Spanish thing, okay? Don't get mad at me. We had one in the 7th Ward on 27th and D, Karen Suarez and Uplift and Parks and Recs and everybody that was involved in that, that was out there, fire department, again, was out there. It was a great time by, great time by all. They did some traditional dancing, they told the story of why we do it, they, we do what we do. I said, we, didn't I? Okay, it could be we. We'll do, we'll do what we do. It was a really nice time, and I appreciate it. Moving forward, on November 10th, NINA, the North End Neighborhood Association, will have its neighborhood meeting, that's my neighborhood association, and we'll be having that Arrowhead Country Club at 7:00 o'clock. Arrowhead Country Club at 7:00 NINA. Also, on November 11th, it's Veterans Day, so happy to all my fellow veterans. Congratulations to all you guys. And no, I did not forget my fellow Marines. November 10th, it's the 247th birthday of the Marine Corps, and I look real good for that old. It's our 247th birthday for the Marine Corps, so to all my fellow Marines out there, happy birthday. On November 11th, the I.E. Veterans Stand Down Committee is having its 14th Annual Veterans Day and Marine Corps Birthday. I'll be going there. It's going to be at the Villas of San Bernardino. That's 2985 North G Street, 2985 North G Street. The Villas of San Bernardino, they're going to have their birthday party. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, council. What tremendous report, and I want to compliment the very good work of our city manager on your city manager report. That was exciting to hear. A lot of good, exciting things happening in our city, and we appreciate it. At this time, we will open it up to public comments. Maybe, no, hold on. We are moving on. We've already recognized them. Edwin Johnson, I would just want to read into the record, on behalf of the city of San Bernardino, records enrichment program for festival. Mr. Johnson, thank you for your community service to our city, and we thank you and your members as you're awarded here and recognized tonight. Moving on to, yes, let's give him a round of applause. Let's move on to our public comments. We have 13 speakers tonight, and we will open up both lecterns. When I read your name, please stand at the bullpen, ready for, for your turn, your opportunity. We have several individuals. Mike Hartley, are you here, sir? I don't see you. Mike, moving on. John Hillman, John, I see you. You're up. Julie Quesada, Julie, are you here? Julie? Julie? Steve Mitchell?
You're first, sir.
All right. John, you're up. Mr. Hillman, followed by Steve Mitchell, Lisa Lamb, and Thelma Thomas. If you've heard your name, please stand on the walls for us and get ready to go. Mr. Hillman.
We, we on? Okay. I'll try and make this as quickly as possible. I'm not going to need three minutes, but mainly, first of all, for the city manager, I don't feel that we are advertising or publicizing San Bernardino and the quality that we have as far as a potential, you know, for this city. I, you know, the bad news gets out there real quickly, but in my area, and I'm in the NINA area, I'm constantly promoting San Bernardino. It's one of the best places to live, but I don't see the city, Mr. Manager, really promoting. Now, maybe I'm missing something, I'm not sure. And so my first comment is really that I would like to see more promotion taking place, you know, for the city of San Bernardino. I would like to see more promotion taking place, you know, for the city of San Bernardino. The second thing that I have as a comment is the fact, more towards the city attorney and the chief of police, who is not here, is that we had just heard, now, maybe I got the wrong information, that there was an agreement with the ACLU in terms of the way, the process of dealing with the homeless issue. All I can tell you is that my community is really irritated right now. We're seeing the homeless go out of control, and for us to make an agreement with the ACLU, excuse me, you know, why aren't we fight, you know, let them sue us. You know, we're supposed to have a city attorney that, you know, can deal with this type of a situation, but I want to tell you that whatever that agreement is, and maybe it was told to me in the wrong way, but all I know is that right now, this homeless issue there off of 30th is horrible. It is absolutely a disgrace, and when we have heard that we have made an agreement with the ACLU, we're left with emotions that are not good. They're really bad, you know? So, that's my comment, and thank you for this time.
Thank you. Steve Mitchell? Lisa Lamb, Thelma Thomas, Douglas Hauser, Janice Hauser, Celeste Williams.
Good evening, thank you, thank you guys for having me. I was liking some of the slideshows of the cleanup. I live in an area where you guys have allowed the buildings to start taking over. I believe I came to Theodore when you first got here and asked him for a gross wait for the vehicles on our street. You remember that meeting? Yeah, I asked you to put up some signs indicating the gross wait. But we've moved forward now, and obviously you're not in my ward no more, it's moved over to Juan, so I didn't get too friendly, I kind of just let it go, but as you know, it's, most people are talking about it now, that they're out of control, the trucks are out of control. When you get six to seven, eight, just parking in the middle of your street with their flashes on, with reefers, I don't know if you guys know what reefers are, but they turn their reefer on, it's on for 24 hours or whatever, they're illegally storing product that should be properly stored. You got homeless, and you got land that's being developed, but you got vacant houses on there. When and how can we get this to get them bulldozed into some kind of, I don't know, I believe I spoke to you about Juan, about putting it in when they buy the land, they have a certain amount of time to where they have to bulldoze it. You're just leaving a free hotel for them. That's all you're leaving. You're leaving me to walk out to a mess, a guy pissing on the sidewalk when my kid walks to school to go to a bus stop. What are you doing? Pay attention to us. You wanted to hear a voice about us? Here it is. Please. I will be seeing more of you, and like I said, I did see some of those pictures where you're cleaning up, and that makes me very proud to be a resident of San Bernardino when I do see stuff that gets done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your comment. Lisa Lamb, Thelma Thomas, Douglas Hauser. Ms. Lamb, welcome.
Welcome, thank you for welcoming us. Good evening, Mayor Valdivia and councilmembers. My name is Lisa Lamb, and I'm representing the Lewis Center for Educational Research, and I brought a couple of our, a few of our student ambassadors from Norton Science and Language Academy, and we want to share some activities and events with you.
Hello, my name is Cory Maldonado, and I would like to thank you for your support regarding our new gym, or, yeah, regarding our new gym that's being built. It will be done by April, it costs us five and a half million dollars, and we would like to show you guys how the money was spent and how great it looks. So, we want to, we want you guys to come on over. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Casey Medina, and I would like to thank Mr. Sanchez for highlighting our Noche de las Estrellas event coming up on December 3rd, which is free to attend and open to the community. This night is made possible thanks to your support, as well as our partnerships with NASA, JPL, and the Mexican Space Agency, the University of Mexico, and many more. We would also like to invite Mr. Alexander to campus, and we'll learn, we'll teach you how to properly say Dia de los Muertos. A fun fact about this event, we are the only site to host this event in here in the United States, which makes me very proud to attend this school, and we're helping put San Bernardino on the map. Thank you for your time.
That was an upload. Mr. Alexander.
All right. Hello, my name is Cory Zaman. I'm a student at, at a school that was made possible by you all. As thanks for all the opportunities you've given us, we'd like to invite you to tour over our campus. We are delighted and take pride in being a part of San Bernardino. Thank you for your time.
Again, we just want to thank you, our school would not be possible without all of your support. We really hope that you are able to visit our campus. Now that we have high school, we feel like we're able to be just a bigger and better part of our community, so thank you again for your support.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ms. Thomas, Thelma Thomas, Douglas Hauser, Janice Hauser, Celeste Williams, you're up.
Good evening, and thank you so much for taking my time out for me. I firstly would like to thank you all for the presentation for the workshop on homelessness. I wasn't able to attend, however, I've been able to watch it like three times on television, and I'm very, very excited about everything that she proposed for the homeless, for the city of San Bernardino, and I'm excited that she even included their pets. I have a list of probably over 150 dogs and cats that they own, that are homeless owned, that they refuse to go into housing because they can't take their animals, so I'm really, really grateful for that, and I just commend her for all of her hard work on that, because, as you know, I've been here time after time, talking about the homeless situation, and I wanted to speak also about the trucking situation in our area. You know, we're, some of us are senior citizens, okay, and we don't move as fast as you speedy drivers, you know, that go down the road, and it takes us a long time to get out of, to get out on the street, because them trucks is all blocking the roadway, so you can't even come out of the driveway, coming out of State of Brothers Market, because the trucks is parked before, at the driveway, so you can't see. So you gotta try to ease out trying to see, and ease out, by the time you ease out far enough, that car going, so you scared to death, it don't make no sense, they can park anywhere, and so we aren't safe, and it's not good for senior citizens not to feel safe, you know, when they're driving up and down the road. There's, and you can't get on the road without 15 to 20 big double-rigged trucks everywhere, everywhere, all kind of holes in the street, you can't go down the street, you're gonna tap your cars, because it's gonna bump it, bump it, bump. You can't, you can't go around them all, they all load a place. Mayor, you and I talked about that, how they're destroying our street, it's just awful what we have, and we need to do something about it. And I would like to say, with the presentation that the young lady did the other night, I know you guys couldn't make a decision at that time, but I'm asking you, and I'm praying to the good Lord, that you do something and do something. We've been talking about this for four years, okay, but this is the first time I saw a real plan. We have a real plan that looks really, really good, and I hope y'all will hurry up and do something about it. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas, just as a matter of point of order, the council did proceed forward on October 27th at the homeless workshop, and we gave approval on conceptual plans to move forward the homeless initiative, and so we're looking forward to get more meat on the bone at a later time, but thank you very much for keeping us accountable.
Praise God, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Okay, Mr. Hauser, followed by Janice Hauser and Celeste Williams.
Hi, I'm Douglas Hauser, I'm on the board of the cabinet of the Redlands Tea Party Patriots, I'm with the San Bernardino County Patriots, several other organizations, and while I believe that what I'm about to say will, would get the approval of most of those members, activists, and volunteers, I am, I want to make clear, I'm speaking only for myself. This is in regard to, I guess, a measure that was introduced last week, attempting to create essentially gun-free zones in certain areas of the city. First of all, I wish to point out that this misguided attempt is clearly misguided, because we know history has shown us that most of the mass shootings and most of the big tragedies that happened that way have occurred in gun-free zones, and several events that have been in the national news recently have shown us that it is not a cliche, but it's a true fact, that the only way to stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. And so I wish to thank by name Ms. Ibarra, Mr. Charette, Mr. Figueroa, and Mr. Alexander for opposing this measure, helping to defeat it, and for the other, the threes who supported it, we will see what effect that will have when they come up for reelection. Just as a point of order, or as a matter of fact, I was passing out some constitutions earlier, anybody who wishes to can turn to page 21, I'll read the Second Amendment. "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." To any of the members of the council who do not understand the phrase "shall not be infringed," I'd be glad to explain it to them, but I'm sure they understand that what they did was actually unconstitutional, and while we all understand that people with severe mental problems, people who have committed crimes, felonies in the past, can be denied certain rights, for people who have been properly vetted, who have not done, you know, things incorrect in the past, and who have obtained legally their concealed carry permits, such a measure outlawing their right to protect themselves, to defend themselves, and to defend others around them, clearly unconstitutional, and so I hope in the future, you'll take into account the Constitution of the United States. That's about it, thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hauser, Janice Hauser, welcome, followed by Celeste Williams, Jim Penman, and Thomas Reese.
So I asked my husband what he was gonna say, and he said he'd, he'd got it all figured out, so he took some of my lines already.
They were good.
They were good, yeah. I'm calling, I'm here for the gun ban resolution as well, to thank those people who voted against it. Sandra Ibarra, Fred Charette, my council member, Fred Charette, Juan Figueroa, and my good friend Damon Alexander. And I want to address, actually, the people who voted, yes, Theodore Sanchez, Ben Reynoso, and Kimberly Calvert. So, if someone has an evil plan, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to gun-free zones. They're not gonna go here, because this guy is right here, he's got the gun right here, you know? They're not gonna go here, they're gonna go to a park that's gun-free, they're gonna go to a school that's gun-free, that's where the mass shootings happen, they go to a theater that says, "This is a gun-free zone." Better that we have someone with a concealed carry permit who's already been vetted, and we know that they're good guys, or good girls, and we know that they, they're not felons, they're not, you know, domestic violence accusers, they're good people that will stand when, when needed. Now I'll tell you, Doug and I go to the Tea Party meetings, we're involved in that, there are 200 people at that meeting, and I'd be willing to bet the least a third of those people are concealed carry, and there's nobody that's gonna shoot anybody there, because they'll be dead in one second. Same thing, we go to the Victorville Gun Shows, we go to the gun shows here in San Bernardino, there's nobody gonna go and mass shoot at those places, you know? So, so, and the other thing is, a whole bunch of cities who've determined that they're gonna ban guns, and they're gonna have free gun-free zones, they end up sending a whole bunch of their tax dollars fighting that in court, and they don't win generally. The other thing, most of the people who have concealed carry permits are women who live alone, and with the rising crime rates right now, to tell them that they cannot get a concealed weapons permit is, you know, I think it borders on some kind of evil, and, but, the constitutional right to bear arms is not for hunting, and it really isn't to protect you against criminals, it's to, to fight off the possibility of oppressive government.
Thank you very much.
And I'll tell you, left or right-
Ma'am, your time is, is expired.
You gotta worry about oppressive governments.
Thank you, thank you for coming out this evening. Next, we have Celeste Williams, followed by Jim Penman and Thomas Reese. Celeste Williams.
Yes.
Thomas Reese.
Good evening, mayor and council, and friends of San Bernardino. My name is Celeste Williams, I live in Ms. Ibarra's Ward. My plight tonight is referenced the corners of Baseline and Waterman. I've been living here for 70, for 21 years now. That corner, those four corners have gotten worse. I'm tired of going, trying to go to the drugstore, the beggars are after me. You can't go to the drive-up window to pick up a prescription because of the amount of filth that's in that yard back there. I've questioned the management of Walgreens, he says, "Well, the city won't do anything." Well, my question is, whose responsibility is all of that if the homeless have left it there? I go out of my community to go to the State of Brothers, because I'm here to tell you, they sell more drugs than the supermarket, or than Walgreens in the parking lots. So it's kind of difficult for a 75-year-old, and God help me if I have to get something after 5:00. It's dark now. The, the amount of homelessness and whatnot, since even in that parking lot, in both Walgreens and in State of Brothers, is becoming overwhelming. That big lot across the street where they had torn down the quote-unquote "affordable housing" that is no longer affordable because there's nothing there, they line up on the side of Waterman, or they line up on the side of Baseline with buckets full of their paraphernalia, it's theirs. All I'm asking you to do is show me a little bit more respect in doing something about that, so I can go back to my State of Brothers in peace, or I can go to my Walgreens in peace, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Penman. Mr. Penman, followed by Thomas Reese, Robert Porter, Rossi Oguayo, and Les Phillips. Philip, sir?
We've heard a number of speakers tonight, almost all of them are critical of what's happening in this city. Variety of issues, but they need to be fixed, and the solutions are there. I am sorry that this mayor and council has not been presented with those solutions. I am sorry that the mayor and council were not informed of that ridiculous agreement with the American Civil Liberties Union, which has tied the hands of our police. That never should have been allowed to happen, that would not have happened on my watch, we would have fought that, and we would have won. That was an easily winnable case with a competent attorney. Ridiculous, no excuse for it, and no excuse for it not being presented to the mayor and council for you to make your decision. Now, we are going to fix this city, and we're gonna start that on Tuesday, November 8. We are going, the voters are going to come in, and they are going to say, "We want 150 more police officers, we want something done about the homeless, we want it to be compassionate, we want them to have mental health services, but we want our ordinance that prohibits camping in public enforced." I encourage all of you to please vote on November 8. Vote for the candidate of your choice. Vote for the retired city attorney of your choice. Vote for the most experienced candidate of your choice, but get out there and vote, because one of the candidates who has experience knows what to do. The other one, throughout the debates, throughout the forums, has said, "I will form a committee, I will listen to the city manager, we will all get together and hold hands and sing kumbaya." Ain't gonna happen. Yes, I'm a bad dude sometimes, but only when necessary, but sometimes you need somebody bad. We don't need another nice person as mayor. We need a tough, serious, no-nonsense, get the job done, and that's what- We need a tough, serious, no-nonsense, get-the-job-done, and that's what you're going to have if you choose to vote for the retired city attorney of your choice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thomas Reese. Thomas Reese, followed by Robert Porter, Rossi Oguayo, and Les Phillips.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Thomas Reese, representative of Laborers Union Local 783. I'm here to, here tonight to speak on the award design-build contract for the Carousel Mall demolition. We understand and fully agree that the Carousel Mall should be torn down, but we don't, but what we don't wanna do is end one problem and create another. Understanding the nature of the project and what environmental remediations need to happen in order to tackle such a large project safely and responsible, not only for the workers performing the work, but also for the general public around the site. From your staff report, it stated that the mall opened in 1972, which means construction took place late 70s, which during that time, there was a lot of asbestos-containing building materials were heavily used. For example, paint, fireproofing flooring tiles, roofing tiles, pipe, et cetera. So there's no doubt that I believe that this project contains asbestos. If not cleaned or mitigated by a skilled, trained, certified asbestos worker, this potentially exposed workers and the general public to hazardous material that would eventually kill them. I might not, it might not happen today, or 10 years from now, but asbestos, if inhaled, will be lodged in the lungs like a fishing hook, that will begin to harden the lung to where the infected person can no longer breathe. I know this firsthand because my uncle, a construction worker who was exposed to asbestos by an unresponsible contractor died of mesothelioma in 2010. We know that this entire project is exposed to asbestos because the homeless have been deconstructing the site for some time now, removing materials like fireproofing and ceiling tiles to get to the valuable metals from the property. AQMD Procedure 5 requires that the whole site be treated as a hot site when it is exposed to asbestos, meaning that all the material inside the facility must be treated during demolition. Using the correct, responsible methods of demolition of this site will undoubtedly be more expensive, which is why I have concern that this project cannot be done safely at the proposed award amount. I have searched for the bid documents for the project to determine if Resource Environmental is truly the lowest and most responsible bidder for the project. They are probably the lowest cost, but that doesn't make them the most responsible. After speaking with industry experts, I was told that the cost for the asbestos abatement alone is more than the proposed award amount. The industry experts also told me that this is a real undertaking, which consists of a million square feet that needs to be mitigated, and over 50,000 square feet of hazardous fire material, or fireproofing material that needs to be mitigated properly. I did not come here to badmouth Resource Environmental. I come here just to make sure that the council is aware that if moving forward with the award, there's potential liabilities associated. I request that if the council, I request that the council hold this for discussion in the future, but also that if the council decides to move forward, that we ensure that there's no health risk to the general public or workers, not approving the change orders or any type of change orders in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Thank you, sir. Robert Porter, followed by Rossi Oguayo, Les Phillips, and also I have one for Monica Robles. Monica, are you here tonight? Okay. We'll get to you in just a moment, ma'am. Robert Porter, sir?
Mayor, council, good people. First, I'd like to mention that we need to vote on Tuesday. I have interviewed Mr. Pennman. You can find that on I Love San Bernardino, up in the Penn area. I will interview Helen Tran the day before the election, next Monday, at KCA NBC at 7:00, so you can listen to what she has to say. But please, go vote. Study your candidates and pick who's best for office. I'd like to mention the Hill Center at Sandals. That was a great event. Pastor Reinhard's worked really hard at that church to build good things for our community. I love the washing clothes, but I also love the skate park that's coming, and the community gardens, and San Manuel's, Ken Ramirez has really done a lot to get this moving too. So, you know, give them props when you see them, and they're really trying to help our community. Dia de los Muertos was an incredible event. I sat there and told the history of Campo Santos Memorial Park. So I got to talk to a lot of local San Bernardinoans, and, you know, they were pretty upbeat, and we were there to honor the, our ancestors that had passed away. And so I went over there and took a picture of my grandparents and my pops, and I put it up on the little altar they did on the memorial there, that hopefully, from the Arts and Historical Preservation Commission, we'll be fixing the plexiglass that's kinda faded in front of there really shortly. Speaking of the Arts and Historical Preservation Commission, we gave you recommendations for our grants. We were very equitable. We tried to make sure everybody got a little something there. So when that comes to you, please vote in favor, and we'll get this money out to the people who need it most with these arts programs. I really look forward to what they're gonna bring back to us. Stipend, please vote that in for next meeting. We really need to talk about this. I've sent all of you messages about this. I've actually been talking about it, about six years ago, I first started bringing it up to try to get people on the Cannabis Commission that were, you know, could get stipend instead of, it was kind of set up. I know Mr. Councilman Alexander was on there, and Dr. Hill, but I wish there would have been more people from the community, but maybe this is a good way to bring more people in the community if they actually have a way to get compensated. November 9 will be my Neighborhood, Valencia Neighborhood Association meeting at 6:00 PM at Denny's. And if you wanna go to that and come find out what's going on in our Neighborhood Association or in our neighborhood, come on down. You're invited, Mr. Alexander and Councilwoman Ibarra. It's a joint meeting for the Paris Hill and Valencia. So come on, welcome all, and come meet some Denny's with us and talk some city talk. And my last thing is about trash. I'd like to, like, kind of challenge you all to, if you see trash in a parking lot, especially Home Depot, or Walgreens, or whatever, please speak with the manager. They'll listen to you. Say something to them. Say, "Hey, this, this looks like a dump here," and I bet you they clean it up.
No, it didn't.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Les Phillips. Les Phillips, followed by Ms. Robles. Ms. Robles, if you wanna take a stand there at the lectern. Sir, welcome.
So this is my first time ever coming down here to talk. I hate doing these things. I hate all this. But my personal opinion, when it comes down to voting, I feel like we're stuck in the middle. We have to pick the lesser evil, Pennman or Helen Tran, to the people that's listening. That's my personal opinion. Because Mr. Pennman was the attorney of the guy who owned the land that brought in the Dollar General in the 7th Ward. And for us to wanna help our people mentally and physically, we can't feed our people snacks and pop and soda. We have to feed them healthy food. So I wish it was something else besides the Dollar General, but it's already here, there, so I can't complain. But my main thing that I wanted to see is, can we notify people further than five, well, it's 1,000 feet now? Can we notify people further than that? Because when crack came to our community, it affected everybody. So, you know, like, let's let everybody know what's going on in our community when it comes down to a new business coming in our community. Because Dollar General is gonna bring, my personal opinion, it's just gonna bring more crime rate. The crime rate's gonna go up higher. What, one person, the liquor store clerk got killed across the street from the Dollar General. Four people got wounded, and one person got shot at the bar next to it. And now their Dollar General wants to have a beer and wine license now. And people didn't even, well, a few people got notified about that, but not everybody in the 7th Ward got notified. It's not even posted on the Facebook County website, you know? But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Robles.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Monica Robles. I'm the author and instructor of the Emprendedores Program, and the founder and president of the Asociación de Emprendedores, a nonprofit organization that provides the services to the counties of San Bernardino, Riverside, Orange, and Los Angeles. I am also the co-chair for Uplift San Bernardino, a small business resource group, and I've been working as a volunteer since March 2020. I'm here today to express my deepest gratitude to the City of San Bernardino, California, the new and previous staff, and the mayor, John Valdivia, because it was in this city that we received our first-ever grant for the Asociación de Emprendedores. You have participated in a lot of our graduations, as well as Ms. Councilmember Alexander, and Ms. Councilmember Kim. I wanna be grateful for your council support through the 2020-2021 and 2021-2022 CDVG grant. This was, like I said, the first city that gave us a grant. We were a small nonprofit, and the City of San Bernardino and the council members have always participated in more than 14 graduations. We have graduated more than 113 people since 2020. And there is a story to all of that, that I want to share a little bit. It has been, in 2019, a regional leader that decided to create a defamation campaign against myself, my Emprendedores Program, and the services that I provide with the intention to close those doors for me and organization. That didn't happen, and that was thanks to the support that we received from the City of San Bernardino, and from the Mexican consulate in the City of San Bernardino. We wanna share with you that we have graduated this year alone, as a nonprofit organization, 280 people from the cities of Orange, Conest, Orange, San Bernardino, and Riverside. And since 2016, the Emprendedores Program had graduated, will end up this year, November 28th, graduated 1,040 individuals, 113 of them from the City of San Bernardino and the county of San Bernardino. So I really wanna give you my deepest thank you for all the support that you provide to the monolingual Hispanic community, for the Asociación de Emprendedores, and I certainly hope that we continue working together, bringing those services to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robles, and we salute the great work that you're doing there. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our comments here. Ms. Rocha, any further comments?
We don't have any requests for AD accommodations, but I have one Zoom comment. Christian Flores, can you unmute your mic and address the council? You have three minutes. Christian, you sound muffled.
Am I muffled, or?
It's better now, thank you.
Okay, do I speak now?
Yes, go ahead and start.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Christian Flores. I'm a community organizer with L.A. Congregations United for Change. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of People's Collective for Environmental Justice, a community-based organization out of San Bernardino. Concerned with the recommendation by staff for Agenda Item Number 2, demolition of the Carousel Mall, we do not believe that this project should be CEQA exempt. CEQA is a tool used to not only create transparency about the potential impacts that a development, or in this case, a demolition, would cause, but it also requires the city and developer to state the mitigation measures they would take in order to reduce the impacts of the project. It is well documented by the city that there is potential toxic contaminants, water and soil, at the Carousel Mall site, in addition to other contaminants. Moving forward with the demolition project without an environmental analysis would be harmful and irresponsible to this site, well, to the environment and to the people that live and work close by the site. We believe that the city should not consider this project CEQA exempt, and move forward with CEQA analysis is before making decisions on the future of the demolition. By including a CEQA analysis, the city can ensure that the most protective measures are taken during the demolition for both the workers and nearby residents. We would like to continue discussing this topic with the staff. Please keep us involved in any relevant correspondence, listserv, et cetera, et cetera. And this is from our community partners, People's Collective for Environmental Justice. I'm just here to support, because I know this is a really important project for everybody in the city, and we don't wanna make sure more people get harmed as a result of any process or any step of the process. Thank you for your time.
That concludes public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to our viewing audience and to those members who have provided public comments. Thank you. Let's move on to item number two. This is Discussion Calendar. I'll ask our sitting manager to please present this. This is the Award Design-Build Contract for Carousel Mall Demolition. It's found on page 15 of your documents here at home, if you're following us or viewing us online. There's a four-fold recommendation there before you, council. We can proceed on with the staff report. Mr. City Manager.
Yes. As you may recall, the council did approve the city staff going out with an RFP for a design-build contract for demolition of the Carousel Mall. The purpose behind design-build in this instance is, it's a complex demolition. So it has to be designed, actually, to protect the buildings that are adjacent to it, or attached to it, as is the case with the old Harris's Building. So there will be an architect, architecture firm, involved in designing the demolition. Then, it's a full-fledged team, it's a fully-vetted team of professionals who are, and having heard of the speaker just now, are well-versed in all the requirements for environmental protection and mitigation. The key here, the problem here, is that the mall has turned into a significant safety hazard, and we have correspondents from the Fire Department, for example, suggesting that we take this course of action sooner rather than later. And hence the, hence the manner in which we're intending to proceed with this, based on the council's approval. So with that, I'm gonna turn over the actual presentation to Daniel Hernandez. So he was Public Works Director. So, Daniel, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protemp, and members of the City Council. Before you, the mayor alluded to the four recommendations. So I'll go ahead and go through each of the four recommendations, and then provide some background and some discussion points. So the first recommendation is to determine approval of the design-build contract as statutory exempt from the environmental review pursuant to Sections 15268 and 15269 of the state's guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act, also referred to CEQA. Approve an award of a design-build contract with Resource Environmental, Inc., in the amount of $7,734,000, adding an allowance in the amount of $2,266,000 for a total project amount of $10 million. The third recommendation is authorize the agency director of administrative services to amend the fiscal year '22 through '24 CIP to conclude the Carousel Mall demolition project in the total amount of $10 million. And lastly, is to authorize the city manager or designated to execute all documents related to the project. So on July 20th, the mayor and the City Council authorized staff to solicit the design-build proposal for the demolition of the mall, as well as authorized private security with Redwood Private Security for 24/7 security patrol of the mall and the mall grounds. Although we continue to face challenges with trespassing and vandalism at the mall, in which I'll further detail in my report, Redwood Private Security has done a commendable job in safeguarding the premises. The next part of my report will be broken down into four components to address each of the recommendations. First, public safety, which will provide staff's justification for recommendation number one. Since the closure in 2017, the mall has become a health and safety burden for the city. Transients have intruded into the mall through the doors and the roofs, causing structural damage to the building, and have removed wiring and valuables for salvaging. The breaching and the vandalism of the property create costs and potential liability for the city. In addition, the May 2022 three-alarm fire inside the mall created more structural damage due to the excess use of water to extinguish the fire. In the last 12 months, more than 56 fires reported in the mall were caused by transients. As indicated in July 20th staff report, facilities, division employees continue to spend approximately 25% of their time addressing issues associated with vandalism and breaches within the last six months. The division has spent in excess of $68,000 in labor and materials, including overtime, to secure the mall. Goes without saying that the time spent at the mall takes away valuable resources, such as labor and budget, from city to address maintenance and repair needs in other occupied buildings throughout the city. Furthermore, the table that was provided in the staff report by the San Bernardino County Fire Department and the San Bernardino Police Department, respectively, each showed that the service calls have increased year over year. Due to the condition of the interior of the mall, as the city manager alluded, on June 6 of this year, a letter was, which was included in the staff report, which is Attachment 4, was received by the Office of the Fire Marshal, expressing their concerns with the condition of the mall, which they believe creates high potential for fire to ignite, grow rapidly and spread, which they asked for the city to take action on that. With that said, staff strongly believes that the demolition of the mall is necessary and a viable solution to prevent safety and health concerns, eliminate the need to allocate valuable city resources, and reduce and eliminate costs of maintaining a vacant building. The next component is the city's municipal code. Per Chapter 15.37, Historical Building Demolition Ordinance, the municipal code requires that an analysis of historical significance be prepared and considered by the Development and Environmental Review Committee, the Arts and Historical Preservation Commission, and the Planning Commission prior to demolition of a building 50 years or older. This is slightly above 50 years, but there is a provision that if the building official declares a building is dangerous, declares a building is dangerous and constitutes an imminent threat to public safety, that could be waived. As outlined earlier in my report, despite continuous attempts to secure the building, the mall has become an attractive nuisance, with many individuals trespassing on a property and entering the building with numerous entrances resulting in significant vandalism and destruction of the interior space. Continued trespassing, transient activity, transit activity, and vandalism has created unsafe environments for both security staff and trespassers due to broken glass, unstable structural components, general debris, criminal activities, and lack of egress. And some of that was denoted in the article by The Sun. You can actually see what the current condition, and it continues to get worse. As a result, the building official declared the building is dangerous and constitutes an imminent threat to public health and safety, which are grounds to proceed with the demolition. The letter from the Buildings Division of the Community and Economic Development is included in the staff report as Attachment Five. The third component is the environmental review. Staff believes that this project is exempt pursuant to state CEQA guidelines, Section 15269, as it's necessary to prevent a public health and safety emergency due to the activity previously described. Waiting to conduct a formal environmental review for any future redevelopment of the Carousel Mall site, which may take several years, would endanger the public due to increased risk of fire in the interim. Further, this project is proposed as a direct result of past fire emergencies on the site. The last component is the RFP process to solicit a contractor to perform the demolition, which ties to Recommendations Two and Four. So on July 26th, the city released a request for a prequalification statement from design-build entities for the Carousel Mall demolition project, with the deadline to submit by August 18th. We did have seven qualified companies to continue with the design-build contract, but only six submitted proposals. After further evaluation of the proposals from a technical and cost perspective, interviews and reference checks, it was determined that Resource Environmental is best equipped and positioned to handle the project on behalf of the city. Although this is not noted in the staff report, Resource actually, on their own dollar, did some testing to address some of the, they're fully aware of the abatement that needs to go on to kind of address one of the speaker's comments. They're fully aware of the scope of what's required. They've already done some initial analysis, which helped them refine their cost estimate. Therefore, staff recommends approval of an award of a design-build contract with the Resource Environmental, Inc., in the amount of $7,734,000, adding an allowance in the amount of $2,266,000 for a total project amount of $10 million. We do have representatives from Resource Environmental, Inc., in the audience today, and we do have a few slides going over their capabilities. If City Council desires to discuss those.
Let me add something. I think it's important to note, too, that the allowance is to provide funding approval for unforeseen conditions. It's not automatically going to be paid to the contractor. It will be paid upon a demonstrated need associated with conditions on the site. So the base bid, the base amount is 7.8, and then the balance is for, to address unforeseen conditions.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you for providing that context. They're obviously fully aware, we've did multiple walkthroughs with all of the firms that submitted proposals. They actually brought in an environmental firm to do some sampling, so they could do their testing and run their own analysis. So they're aware of the condition in the interior and some of the materials that need to be abated. So they feel fairly confident in the proposed amount that's being presented today. Lastly, as it relates to the fiscal impact, the initial cost of the demolition will be covered using fund balance to ensure the demolition could be completed expeditiously. This action will not result in the use of required reserves. If the council does approve the action, staff will follow up with necessary budgetary actions at a future meeting. Staff intends to explore options to cover these costs, including the possible issuance of long-term debt and the possibility of requiring such costs to be covered by any future development. That concludes my presentation. Myself, our city engineer, Mr. Alex Keisha, are here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I want to reassure the, before we get any council member comments, the Carousel Mall has been in existence for almost 50 years, and while I really appreciate and grew up at Carousel Mall, Central City Mall, as a kid, I understand that we all have a vested interest in seeing not just the historical aspects, but the future growth of our community. I think this is a very important project here before the council. We have already seen the tantamount effects of the neglect in not securing the property. We've done some good work in the last six months, in fact, the last 90 days, to secure it and add more security. So I want to see where the council is, but I think we have taken procedural step at it, moves to come this far. It's a very important decision here before our council. I want to encourage the council, please, let's be open to the staff's recommendation. There is a four-fold recommendation to approve this. My question to you, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Field, why the $2.6 million allowance? And where's the need? Because normal standard operating is about a 10% contingency. Can you provide some explanation to the council?
This is, well, it's a very complex project, and there is the potential to find things underground, for example, that we don't know about yet. So we wanted to provide enough funding upfront that we didn't have to come back to the council and asking for, you know, additional funding over and above what would be a typical contingency fund, yes, of 10%. So this is basically to make sure that the project can go forward as expeditiously as possible, with as few delays as possible. If we ran over contingency, then we'd have to be coming back, and there would be potentially a delay in the project. So we thought this was prudent, keeping in mind, too, that our estimate was that the project was going to be $10 million. And so we had already essentially set aside that amount of money. So the fact that it came in lower than the estimate is beneficial, but we really, because of the need to expedite this project, we thought it prudent to recommend this.
Mr. City Manager, I appreciate the fact that you suspected or estimated the project would be $10 million, and I appreciate your professional comment on that. My question more so, in the Caltrans, as I sit on other agencies, regional transportation committees, there is a staff analysis or a markup of some sort from a staff engineer's perspective. Do we have any staffing or engineer perspective on that, and maybe their cost estimate or project estimate from our city staff on that? Has it penciled? And what does the staff say on that estimate? What the cost was?
So there's work that has been prior, because this project dates back multiple years, but there is work that has been done, so Mr. Alex Keisha can speak to that.
Very good.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yes, we did an initial engineer's estimate for the project, and it came around the $10 million that the city managers have spoke about. And that is what we, when we advertise the project, we advertise it in a way that is, we try to capture everything possible that we have and that we can encounter at the mall. But because of unforeseen circumstances, that it could be happening anywhere, like maybe something under, you know, something that was in the ground that we have no idea about, because remember, this mall has been built 50 years ago, but we have limited plans for it. We looked for any plans that we might have, so we can know or understand exactly the severity of it, but we could not find any. So we ask for the allowance just in case, if we find something, it can address that then, we didn't have to come back to you and ask you for more money.
And it's your professional advice and experience that suggests it's about a $7 million project with a contingency overrun of about 2.2?
It's 7.8, 7.8 million, that is the, about, and then 2.2 for the extra contingency, extra contingency, yes.
For a total of 10?
Allowance, sorry, allowance.
Allowance.
We call it allowance, not contingency.
Allowance, okay, very good. Okay, we'll open it up to council members. Councilmember Calvin, followed by Councilmember Reynoso.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for your report, and Mr. Keisha. I'm quite concerned. This project, we all know that the mall needs to be demolished. What we don't know is what a CEQA report says. We don't know what any other environmental reports might say, and those reports were supposed to come before the Ad Hoc Committee quite some time ago. We've been waiting on those for a very long time. I can in clear conscience believe that somehow or another, where a vehicle repair shop, Montgomery Wards, Sears, all of those places that was providing automobile repairs, we know what's underground. We believe we know what's underground. We know what type of businesses were there. We have a responsibility to be able to look at that documentation before, in order to, in order to let the community know that this demolition is not going to be harming everybody else around in the community. It's just the right thing to do. I am going to make a motion that this be brought back before us. We need the reports, even the reports that you're speaking of, that you do have, but they're not included in the backup, they need to be here. I don't, I believe that everybody that has been working with the downtown redevelopment project understands and clearly knows that those reports should have been before us. Thank you.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Thank you. I echo my colleague's sentiments fully, and it sounded like you even admitted, all of you, that 2.2 million to need that because of a possible, like what's underneath, but it's CEQA exempt? We're not fools. I think that all of us up here agree, we do need to do something about it. I read Mr. Allen's firsthand account on the inside, very detailed, appreciate that. But we all had an idea that it needs to go. But as I'm coming to this meeting, I'm thinking, first off, obviously, if we've got no plan for what the redevelopment will actually be, what does that mean for a San Bernardino resident, be rolling past and see this massive void? Usually, when you have demolition, you have construction within a certain amount of time. It's no secret, we're not in a good place with the redevelopment, period. And so this is premature, feels half-cocked, and also, I want to hear you stay on the record, expand, City Manager, if this is your plan, $10 million that's needed, and 7.8, if we pay that out to somebody, tell me how we're going to get that back, guaranteed.
It was supposed to be put on the back end of the deal.
Who's going to buy that? No one's going to buy this property knowing that there's 7.8 million in the hole.
Mr. Reynoso, you posed a question, City Manager.
Sure, good.
Mr. City Manager, can you help us understand the $10 million, and how are we going to get our money back on this property?
If we sell it in the current condition, that means whoever would buy it would have to do the demolition of the mall. So there's an automatic, no matter who does it, there's automatically, the project itself is $10 million in the hole. The difference here is, though, that first of all, they won't lose the time. Whoever buys it will not lose the time associated with demolition. It is a complex demolition. So that by itself accelerates the project to a degree, and the sales price will be such that it will reflect a developable site, whereas we do not have a developable site today and haven't had. That's why, I mean, two years ago, I tried to bring this forward for the same reason, because I think it's important for two reasons. First of all, it shows progress. I mean, it's funny, but demolition here sometimes represents progress. Look at Scottish Wright. Look at some of the other buildings we demolished. This is the biggest demolition project that we will ever do, but it makes the site developable. It also actually frankly makes it developable by different levels of developer. I mean, we don't have, you don't have to put all your eggs in one basket with one development team. So it makes it also a more versatile site, in a sense. In terms of recovering the, you know, the market will tell us exactly what happens, but guaranteed, if it stays there, nothing will ever happen there. So if we get rid of it, we can then sell off all or part, and we will recover. There's no way that we won't recover. You know, you can't provide an absolute guarantee with a stamp on it, but you can say that the property is easily, it's 43 contiguous acres in a downtown setting. It's worth more than $10 million. So once it's demolished, it would be the city staff's recommendation and intention that the sales proceeds would go into, back into the same fund from which the project, the demolition project was paid for in the first place. One other thing, by the way, CEQA. CEQA is an interesting law, but what we're really, I think, mostly concerned about here is things are, we're concerned about toxic substances, and CEQA doesn't really speak to that so much as the more global environmental impacts. In this instance, we've done phase, we have done the Phase One environmental study twice, and we will provide it to you, our apologies, but we do, we have, it has been done, and...
Mr. City Manager, let me take a timeout.
Yep.
The Phase One environmental has, there's been some comments that we have JCPenney, oil wells and whatnot. The Phase One has addressed those issues and the report thereof.
Well, let me be clear. Phase One does not address anything other than identifying potential sites of contamination based on past uses of the site, okay? A Phase Two and a Phase Three are what do the actual mitigation. So Phase Two is where you poke some holes in the ground to see if there is, just because there is a gas station there, doesn't mean there automatically is contamination. Seems likely because of the timeframe in which the gas station would have been there, but you don't know for sure. So Phase Two, you poke a hole and see if there actually is...
And we're talking 45 acres, the two potential sites are less than 5% of the 45 acres.
Well, there are 14 potential sites of contamination on the overall project site.
But when you calculate the entirety of it, it's minimal.
That's not how this stuff works. I mean, if there's contamination, there's contamination, you have to clean it up. The cleanup would be happening through this, will be happening through this project. The locations are known, are knowable and known, where we have to be particularly mindful of the potential for contamination, okay? So we have a general idea of where those hotspots are, if you will. So those would be areas of particular concern, and those would be areas that would be cleaned up as part of this demolition project.
Okay, Councilmember Reynoso, any final comments? Mr. Charette?
Thank you. The Phase Two, then, we've got $2.2 million. Shouldn't we be doing Phase Two now? I mean, shouldn't we be poking those holes, as you call it, and knowing what's, kind of knowing what's down there in those 15 or 17 areas?
Those, the demolition contractor will be responsible for doing that investigation and doing the cleanup anyway. So they'll do the Phase Two and Phase Three work.
So that's, I have a real problem. Listen, I want this thing done as much as anybody, and I understand the urgency of trying to get this thing down and get a development going. The economy has changed on us, we've lost a developer. I am really concerned that we estimated $10 million, and miraculously, it came out to exactly $10 million with a contingency. And it's not really looked at as a contingency, and I've sat on some other boards, too, where we talk about millions or large numbers of dollars, and there's always a 10% contingency. This one's three times that. And the other thing, the staff report doesn't show the other bids at all. I looked for them, they're not in there. So I don't know if there was one that was at 8 million, or if there was one that was at 28 million. I don't know anything about where the other seven or eight bidders are, and so I have a problem. I hate to put in the brakes on this project in any way, shape, or form, but I, just with what's going on, and I understand that we wanted to do this 10, two years ago, and...
And it was 2 million.
And, I'm sorry?
No, I just said, and it was 2 million.
Well, and that's what we were kind of talking about, but we didn't get far, there were some issues with why we weren't able to go forward at that time. And it's a shame that that came up, and that it was, for political reasons, I believe, that we weren't able to go forward at that time. I remember you telling me about a fund in Sacramento that's called some kind of a bank that we would be able to borrow from, and then we would get the proceeds back through the sale of the thing. As much as this is creating a problem for the city with the homelessness, the potential for fires, the other areas, the cost for, I just don't think this is really ready for primetime tonight. And again, I have a real problem with saying adding an allowance, adding an allowance of $2.2 million. Wow, that's a pretty nice allowance. And I get a contingency, but where are the other bids? And did the other bids require an allowance? What if the other bids had come in at $11 million, and there was no $7 million, and 11 million and up? Then where would we be? Would we be adding another 2 million to the 11 million to do the allowance? It just doesn't kind of, it just doesn't kind of ring true with me based on what I'm seeing here, and I'd like to see the other bids. I'd like to know where they were. I mean, even a ballpark, what was the next lowest bid?
So again, the bids range from 7.7, which was Resources, was the lowest bid, but this is not lowest responsible bidder. This is an RFP for the firms that we felt was best equipped to... was best equipped to provide both the service...
You said, you said that we had, how many total?
So, there were six total, so the bids...
And they were all responsible?
Yes, because they got pre-qualified.
Because they were pre-qualified?
Yes.
Fine, great. So, this is the lowest...
Yes.
Responsible. But if it had not been the lowest responsible, what's the next, the next lowest?
So, the bids range from 7.7 million to 29.4 million.
Oh, I said 28 million, how did I do that?
So, I think you have a solution for this council member, right? You would like this brought back with all the...
I'm sorry, hold on, Councilman Sanchez, just hold on.
Wait, no, you hold on, please.
Mr. Charette, Mr. Charette, no, I'm the chair, you're going to hold on just a moment, sir. Mr. Sanchez, please stop, let's, let's, Mr. Charette has a floor, Mr. Charette, go ahead, proceed.
Well, I just think it's amazing that I just, out of the clear blue sky, said it could be 7 million up to 28 million, and it's actually 7 million up to 29 million. Unbelievable. And how can there be that kind of a disparage, disparage? What's the right word?
So, I, I alluded to that in my staff report, Resource did the work, they paid, and they didn't disclose how much they paid for it on their own dime.
That's not, that's their problem.
Well, what I'm saying is that they understood, so...
That they were going to get 2 more million?
So, that 2.0 million is not necessarily allocated to their contract.
There has never in my life, and it's a pretty long one, been a government agency that had a contingency that didn't use it or come back for changes, especially on, as you put it, Mr. City Manager, a very complex, and it sounds to me like it's complex if someone that's qualified puts in a bid at 29 million dollars. With the economy going down right now, they looking for work?
So, we're...
Or they're so busy, they're just going to throw a 29 million dollar...
Mr. Charette, would you allow the staff to present?
Well, it's just not making any sense.
You've asked some questions, I, I understand that, but let Mr. Hernandez, our professional staff...
What was the next lowest, though? I, I didn't get that one.
16.3 million.
16, oh, from 7 to 16? No way, thank you.
So, we conducted interviews with multiple firms, and we had them assure us of, of the number, you know, Resources has the capability, they've done projects of this size, ranging from 10 to 15 million dollars. They recently shared a project that they did at Compton High School, which is a high visibility project, and they actually, we have a video, if the council desires to, to see it, showing their capability, they're fully aware what their number is, they're not lowballing us, they're not trying to, they've assured us that they can deliver on the city's expectation in a reasonable timeframe.
In my experience, it, limited as it is, but sitting on a number of boards that, that build airports and other things, I just, I'm still struggling, discrepancy or disparage between, you know, if these, then, then take out the 2 million, and tell them, do it, you're so good, you know, you've checked it all, you've done your testing, do it for 7.7 million, and we'll give you a 10% contingency. But even then, I'm not comfortable with the difference between 7.7 million, let's call it 8 million dollars, and 16 million as the next lowest, clear up to 29 million. That just, they can show me stuff all day long, and I just, it just doesn't really work for me.
Mr. Hernandez, the disparity between the 10 million dollars, which is our staff report and recommendation of 10 million dollars, including the allowance, would then be a 6 million dollar variance between the next highest bidder? Is that, is that your report?
You have the other 2 million on top of the 16.
Hold on, Mr. Charette.
So, the 2 million that we're adding for the, what we're referring to as the allowance...
So, we're 10 million bucks, yeah.
It's close to, the difference is 9-plus million between the second and the first, or the ranked firms in terms of staff's ranking between the second and Resources, so it's about 9 million dollars. The allowance is city added, not contractor requested. This is the allowance that we built into the project, but they, they, we, we asked them, can you lock in this price? But they're locking in the price for what they see, and again, we're just demolishing, we're not, we're not excavating for future development, we're clearing the site. The formal CEQA will be done, and as the Director of Economic Development referred to the specific plan, that the whole, that's going to be wrapped up in that EIR, the whole development of the project, but this project itself will be left graded with proper drainage, so that the actual, there is no runoff from, from the site. So, it's going to be professionally done and maintained, so that, that first we get rid of the nuisance, but it's left in the matter, in the manner that's still complies with all stormwater requirements, all CEQA requirements in terms of potential debris that may come off the, the site. So, we, we've talked to them about how they plan to mitigate, they have a full-fledged plan that was presented to staff, which is why we feel comfortable recommending Resources.
Again, my problem is with all the experience that we have, and you, and the city manager, and the city, Mr. Keystha, are you an engineer nowadays? Is that your title, city engineer? And that, and that nobody, and for, again, miraculously, we estimated that it was going to be 10 million, we get a bid for 8 million, we add 2 million, miraculously, it's 2 million dollars, but the next highest bid is still 16 million dollars. That, to, all this, all this experience tells me, I mean, I would, it just, it, no one seemed to think that there's any problem there. It's, you know, this makes sense, sure, 16 million over here, but we can get it done for 7. Never works that way, it won't work that way, and I'm not going to support it that way.
So, if I can, Mayor, so, it's important to note, the second lowest proposer was going to issue credits to the city based on the hazmat reports that they do. So, based on the amount of abatement that they had to do, they would issue credits to the city, which would reduce the, the fact that Resource, on their own dime, already knows the scope of the abatement, is why they were able to come in so low and, and understand what the cost to abate it was going to be, which is why they feel comfortable. They've done projects of this magnitude, and they know what they're bidding.
And the city manager said, this is very complex, he's used that word three or four times, and now it's sounding like, oh, this is routine, we're just going to go knock down buildings for 7 million dollars, 8 million dollars, and we'll be fine, everything will be fine, it'll be nice and clean, so the developer can come in and start, start building. It, it just doesn't, it just doesn't pass the smell test for me.
Thank you, Mr. Charette. I want to add some context to what Mr. Charette had alluded to. Just in the past 30 days, I sat on a different committee, not here, elsewhere, and I'm a member of, and the Highland 210 corridor was bid by several contractors, and the lowest responsible bid was 40 million dollar difference, 40 million dollar difference from the next highest. So, there's anomalies and aberrations, that's why we rely on staff to feder out all these details, to provide a good staff recommendation, and we hold our staff and our city manager responsible. These are, the scale is 7.7 to 29 million dollars. On packet page number four of this, the, there was a, a detailed analysis there that the staff has provided. We have, this is no news to us, City Council, we have launched into this effort, you've authorized this 90 days ago, so it comes to me as a surprise, that we're now balking at the opportunity. And finally, the last letter is, this is, has support from the San Bernardino County Fire Department and our building official as far as a health and safety matter.
Yeah, this, this, we're not balking at, we're not balking at this, we want to do it, we want to do it.
Can I ask a question?
It just doesn't all make sense, and the fire department cares about one thing, and that is to get rid of it, they don't care how we do it, they'd love to see us get rid of it, and so...
Can I ask a question?
All that just doesn't pass the smell test.
Thank you. Well, I, okay, thank you. Mr. Alexander, sir, you're anxious and ready, go ahead.
Well, I was just, for the ninth, and thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Director, do we have a timeline?
Once the contract is executed, they've committed to 190 days.
Okay.
So, once we, once we issue the...
Okay, 100, 100, that's it, man, that's it.
I'll leave it there.
And I am too disheartened that we don't have all the bids, like usually in our backup package, so in the future, no, please do that. And on this page, on packet page two, it says allowances, $100,000, what is that?
What page, page two?
Packet, packet two, says, says four, says allowances, $100,000. Says cost proposal budget, it breaks it down.
Page two, staff report?
Not the staff report, of the documents provided.
Attachment three in the backup, number two, page number 21.
Oh, geez, got it.
Cost proposal budget.
That's what it's at?
That's allowances?
Is that...
Why does it say allowances? Because that, to me, that's like allowances for unforeseen issues.
Are the documents...
Does someone want to come up here and look at it?
So, attachment number three, it does say allowance, item number four, there's a grid, there's a chart that says allowances of 100,000, but when you do the math, Mr. Alexander, it's, and I'm not an engineer, so I'll let the staff, but it sounds to me that that's the cost proposal budget within the framework of the 7.7 million dollars.
Right, it is, but I just want to know what allowances mean, is that unforeseen allowances? Is that an additional contingency? You know, that, I just want to be clear on, if we're paying all this money, and they can do it within that timeframe, is that another 100,000 for whatever? Let's be clear.
Mr. Hernandez, do you see that?
Sorry, I'm trying to pick it up on my computer, I apologize.
Daniel, if you download the packet, it's page 173.
While we're waiting, I'd like to second Councilmember Calvin's motion to bring back with CEQA environmental impact reports.
I'd, can I, can I speak now? My colleague, Charette, brought up a really, really good point. This sometimes happened, happens in the construction industry, where you'll get someone who underbids everyone else, and then they have all sorts of change orders, and before you know it, they were the most expensive, but they won the contract, right? They got their foot in the door. What I want is, I want, you guys, the staff does do diligence, but this is serious. I, I not only want the staff to go back and, and discuss and convene with all the bidders on their proposals, but I want an amendment to the contract that includes a 10% allowance and no other change orders. So, so 10%, and you're capped, because I worry that they'll come back and say, oh, you know what, we didn't take into account this, 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 and this, so it's really going to be 26 million.
Mr. Sanchez, allow me, please, that would be then, Ms. City Attorney, a rejection of the bids, if we were to go and consult with all seven proposed bidders. We've already, already opened the, the bill, the bids, the opportunity is to act today, either to accept this bid or reject the bid, or we move to continue the item, provided that we get more information from staff on Mr. Charette's proposed request to get more staff backup, the markup of these, of these bids, and a little bit more information as requested by the council members. That would be the, the recommendation, Mr. Sanchez.
So, to continue, continue this to the first meeting in December, and we need to make sure that it's clear, what was, what was that?
So, we do have a motion in a second.
So, I, I make the substitute motion, that we continue this...
Can I finish my line of question, if you don't mind?
Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, Mr. Alexander, I didn't know that you needed more time.
Right, because they didn't answer the question.
Okay.
Just for Mayor, for clarification, I think you just might want to restate the motion in a second.
Okay, he can do that, as soon as I finish.
Well...
Appreciate everybody.
Mr. Alexander, go ahead and proceed, sir.
Thank you, so, we're back to, oh, there's the director.
Unfortunately, we don't have a response for you, we'll have to come back and look at that, that specific line item, but I, I do want to, if I, if I may...
Okay, well, no, not yet, I'll give you all your opportunity to do. Okay, so we don't know what the 100,000 is for, so, and they gave us a contingency of 703,000, so I was doing some rough math, because I'm responsible for these, for our residents' money. 202 million point, 2 million, 2, 2.266 million, 2, 2 million, 266,000 plus 703,000, more or less, is 3.9 million of contingencies, that's what I'm getting to. 3.9 million, then if we add that 100,000 in, that's 4 million of contingencies, and they can do it for 6 million and some change, 6.6 million, and walk away, but yet we would have 4 million in contingencies. You know what, if they can do it for 6 million, or 6.7 million and some change, and then have some environmental reports, and knock it out, and no contingencies other than what, what they have right there, then go ahead and do it, but I'm not for 2.2 million in contingencies. That's not, that's not good fiscal responsibility. So, in downloading the agenda packet, the, in downloading the agenda packet, the city engineer did bring up a, a letter that was provided by Resources on page 177 of the, of the attachment, or the entire packet. It, it says by Resources that this guaranteed all-inclusive price at 7,734,000. The 2.2 is city-driven, not contractor-driven. So, they've guaranteed, in essence, the price, it's all, an all-inclusive price for what they've seen, what they've touched. The actual excavation will happen when the project is developed, they're going to infill with the crushed material, so the actual impact to the environmental portion of it will take place when the project is developed. So, they've provided us an all-inclusive statement, written statement, as part of their packet, and it's page 177, and sorry for not alluding to that in the staff report earlier. So, so why even put in the 2 million dollars?
This is, again, I, I, it just, things happen in construction, and to...
Okay, things happen in construction, but isn't that why you have the 10%?
So, that, that's the contractors, the two, again, this, this is a conscious decision by staff to allow us to, to...
And not to prolong this, and I got it, that's all she had to say, is by staff, but not to prolong this, why 2.2 million? Why, in, in a nutshell, not to keep us here all night? Why, why that number? Why, why that number?
Since we, we gave the council a previous estimate of 10 million dollars, we rounded it up to 10 million dollars.
See, thank you.
Councilmember, any other questions?
Is, is David done?
Councilmember Alexander?
Oh, no.
Concluded, okay. Any other council members?
I wanted, I wanted to be where, to where we're doubly sure that, that they can do this for that stated amount. I want, I want you guys to go there, tour the place, really go over every last detail, because I hope this council will be willing to jump in with me. If they come in and say, oh, you know what, now that we've started, it's really going to be 26 million dollars, no, I'll, I'll drag them to court, because that's, that's the, the classic bait and switch, for the, for there to be that much of a disparity between, between one bid and the others, makes no sense. So, my, my substitute motion would be for staff to vet, again, these and the other proposals, come back to the first meeting in December, and if, if the, if the staff recommendation is the same, that we include language, that you're being held to this, your, your, what was the 7 point, whatever, 734, plus the 10%, and no, no change orders beyond, beyond the, the 10% allowance, and that's it. And really hold them to it, because I think the city needs to hold them accountable if suddenly they come back and say, no, it's actually going to be another 12 million dollars. No, I want, I want us to be able to have enough assurances from staff that they had committed to this, and then we'll drag them into court if we need to, and obligate them to complete this project for the stated amount.
I'll second that too, and I have a...
If I, if I can, Councilmember Sanchez, I do believe, though, that we still are in need of these environmental reports, they've always been what we have asked for, it's always been part of the demolition process, it's always been part of the redevelopment for the, for the Carousel Mall. So, I'm not understanding at all why we don't have the ones from Resource, I'm not understanding why for the last year and a half... So I'm not understanding at all why we don't have the ones from Resource. I'm not understanding why, for the last year and a half, we have not gone on and proceeded, and we were doing bids on, on someone to come in and do these evaluations for us. I'm, I'm just unhappy that we don't have anything here to represent the safety, to represent what is actually underneath that ground. This, we cannot, it is not just about the fee. It is about the reports that are not being done before we begin to demolish the Carousel Mall.
Ms. Calvin, our city manager has assured us that the Phase One feasibility report has and is available. He will provide that to staff members, release it to the public.
I understand that. That sounds convenient, but it is not being part of the plan, is what I'm just stating.
Ms. Calvin, I'm trying, I'm trying to help the whole council understand what your concerns are, and to allay the fears of the council, Mr. City Manager has provided that Phase Two and Phase Three are forward-looking. We, we, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't tell now.
Why are we going backwards, sir?
And so you're going to have to be patient as we uncover more of these environmental issues.
No, the environmental issues have always been discussed upfront.
Ms. Calvin, Phase One has been completed, and we're happy to provide those public documents to you.
Assuming this is brought back, depending on how the council votes, but we'll amend the packet to include the Phase One reports, both of them. There are two.
And copies of the bids.
Copies of the bids. All the requests from the council will be accounted for and included in the revised
Do you think you can have this prepared by December, first meeting in December?
Yes, I think, I think we can. With the adjustments that the council has requested, yes, we can.
Okay, Mr. Charette.
Yeah, I have one more question. I'm going to put it in real simple terms. We're going to, you have a piece of ground. You have a building sitting on it. We're going to knock it down for 7.7 million dollars. Any mitigation or problems below the surface is going to be dealt with later? Is that correct? Because what I'm saying is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't really agree that no change orders. If we were asking them to dig down, because we might not know where there's a pipe or where there's some, I, I know a contractor that went through that a few years ago here locally. It ended up in court, and he won some money, never got paid, but the, the point was, was that there were electrical or, or something underground that no one did know, and that certainly could happen. But again, my simple, my simple analysis, or analogy, is we're not going below the surface. We're just knocking everything down on top of it and hauling it away, or filling in a hole with some of the, the stuff that's left over. Is that correct?
In simplest terms.
That is not complex.
Well
That is not complex, and I just illustrated it very simply, that the next person that comes along, or the developer that comes along, or we, as the owner of the property, we may need to, in some day, dig down and find those gas, gasoline tanks, or the oil, or whatever else. But knocking a building down and leaving it flat is, that, to me, as a, not an engineer or a contractor, does not seem complex.
I think, I think they're real compliant for two things. First of all, in terms of the locations of those 13 or 14 sites that turned up in the Phase One, none of them are under the mall proper. They're in the, out basically in the parking lot around like where the Montgomery Ward service play area is. It's already flat. So that's, but it, well, no, but it still needs to be mitigated as part of this project. But this, these are, they would be explored as part of the demolition for the Phase Two, essentially, and if there's a Phase Three required, which is the actual mitigation, then so be it. That's what would happen. The, the, I think the complexity is, is what's underneath the mall property itself, and what are we going to turn up as we do, you know, as we do the demolition.
But I just, I just said, for the $7 million to knock down those buildings that are above ground, they knock them down, haul the concrete and the debris and the roofing and all that away. They haul it away. Now it's clean, it's fresh, but we don't know what's underneath. That becomes another phase, if you will, or another issue for us as the property owner, or for the developer that comes in later, right?
Well, I mean, the properties, the building itself is partially subterranean, so some of the demolition is actually going to take place
But we're not going to go under that. We're going to, I, I thought we were just saying we're going to kind of push it in and fill it in.
So there is the basement. We have adjoining properties that do require some shoring, because we have to obviously safeguard the Enterprise Building, the Harris Building. So there is some components, because they're really close to each other. So there is some engineering that is built into part of the project to be able to ensure that the, the integrity of the neighboring buildings. There is some subsurface work, but that's not
But it's not subsurface underground. It's, it's an basement. There's a floor there. It's a basement. It's a void. It's a
But it's below grade.
All basements are below grade, but there's a grade below the basement, too. Right? I mean, it, it's kind of disturbing that I can figure this out.
All right. We have had a lot of discussion here. Councilmember Sanchez, you had a substitute motion, sir. And I'm going to ask Ms. Rocha, please, I think we got it, Ms. Rocha, if you could repeat the substitute motion by Sanchez.
Substitute motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Mayor Protem, is directing staff to vet all proposals, bring back the item on December 7. If the recommendation remains the same, ensure that Resource Environmental Inc. be held to the 7.7 million with the 10% allowance and no change orders.
And environmental reports.
Is that part of your motion, Councilman?
No, not the environmental, not the environmental reports, but you know, I, it's been pointed, it's been pointed out that their, their allowance is, is calculated into their 7.734 million. So, yeah, yeah, but, so I would, I would slash the, the 7, the 7.734 plus the 10%, and just go with the 7.734. They have their, they have their own allowance put in there, so that should be, that should be enough.
Okay, there's support. Councilman Figueroa supports that. Mr. City Manager, you'll provide Phase One environmental reports to us on the backup material when it comes back, please.
We'll provide it in advance, actually.
Okay, that's fine.
We will provide it to all the council members and to the public, as, you know, as soon as, like, first thing next week.
Phase One.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And I, yeah, I mean, the 10, I'm sorry, Councilman, is it, was there a 10% contingency built into your motion?
No, well, you know, the 10% contingency is built into the proposal, so we would go with that 10% allowance.
So there's, he'd withdraw the 7.7 plus the 10%, so it's just 7.7 flat?
Exactly.
Okay, and there's support by Councilman Figueroa?
I'll second.
Members, cast your votes.
Motion passes 522 with Councilmember Reynoso and Calvin voting in opposition.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes to come back on December 7. Thank you very much. This is item number three. Thank you, staff members. Thank you. I know this was difficult. Thank you. Appreciate you. Item number three, administrative policy for the sale of real property. There, there is a recommendation there before you. I'll entertain a motion on this. Is there a move for approval on this? Item number three. Item number three is staff recommendation. Is there a motion?
Let's go. Motion to approve.
Second. All right. Members, cast your votes, please.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our public hearings tonight, this is public hearing number four. Public hearing on annexation number six to Community Facilities District 2018-1, Safety Services. It's a four-fold recommendation there before you. The public hearing is to consider annexation proceedings and elections for the City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District 2018-1. Do any councilmembers wish to hear the staff report? Hearing none. No expressions to hear it. Is there any members of the council have any questions of staff or wish to make any comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. We will now receive comments, protests, and questions from any persons in the audience who wish to speak and address the council on this matter. Each person may address the city council for a maximum of three minutes. Are there any members of the public wishing to address? Please contact the city clerk. Ms. City Clerk?
We didn't receive any requests to speak.
Okay, and has a city clerk received any written protests?
I have received zero written protests.
All right, Ms. City Clerk, are there any persons registered to vote within the annexation number six of Community Facilities District 2018-1? If so, how many registered voters are there?
The County of San Bernardino Register of Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within Annexation Number Six of Community Facilities District Number 2018-1.
Okay, thank you. The time being 10:22 PM, I now declare the public hearing closed. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, for Resolution 2022-2026 of the Mayor and City Council. There's a motion by Figueroa, seconded by Reynoso. Ms. City Clerk?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, may I have now a motion to adopt a resolution of 2022-2027?
He skipped over my next part. It says, the official ballots have been open, and all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballots, and the election is now closed.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, to adopt Resolution 2022-227 of the Mayor City Council of the City of San Bernardino declaring election results for Community Facilities District 2018-1? Charette and Figueroa on the second.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, very good. This is item number five. Public hearing of Annexation Number Seven to Community Facilities District 2018-1. Four-fold recommendation there before you, councilmembers. The public hearing is now to consider annexation proceedings and the elections for the City of San Bernardino Community Facility District Number 2018-1. Annexation number seven, and the hearing is now open. Do any councilmembers wish to hear the staff report? Do any members of the council have any questions of staff or wish to make any comments? Hearing none, we'll move now to receive comments, protests, and questions from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on the matter. Each person may address the city council for a maximum of three minutes. Please submit your speaker slip to our city clerk. Are there any members of the public wishing to address us?
We did not receive any requests to speak.
Very good, and Ms. City Clerk, have you, you received any written protests?
I have received zero written protests.
Ms. City Clerk, are there any persons registered to vote within Annexation Number Seven of Community Facilities District 2018-1?
The County of San Bernardino Register of Voters has certified that there are no registered voters with the Annexation Number Seven of Community Facilities District Number 2018-1.
Okay, I now declare this hearing closed, the time being 10:24 PM. May I please have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-228? Moved by Charette of the Mayor City Council of the City of San Bernardino, calling election to submit to the qualified electors a question of levying a special tax within the, within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facility District 2018-1. Annexation number seven. There's a motion by Charette, seconded by Figueroa. Ms. City Clerk?
Sorry, can you repeat that? Who, who made the motion?
Figueroa, Figueroa's on the second, Charette's on the move.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem? Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. May I now have a motion to adopt Resolution of 22, 2022-229 of the Mayor City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, declaring election results for the Community Facilities District Number 2018-1, Annexation Number Seven. So moved.
If I may, the official ballots have been open, and all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot, and the election is now closed.
Okay, thank you. The motion maker is Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
By Reynoso?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
The time being 10:26 PM, I now declare the public hearing closed. May I please now have a motion? Wait a minute. I think I messed this up, didn't I?
We're on item six now.
Oh, I'm done. Okay, great. I'm off my script, sorry. Number six, this is item number six, the approval of the draft fiscal year 2022-2020, 2021-2022, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The opening time is at approximately 10:27 PM. May I please get a staff report on this item?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the city is a direct recipient of the Community Planning and Development Formula Grants, specifically CDBG grants, home grants, and ESG grants. And as a city, as an entitled city, the city is required to report annually to the United States Housing and Urban Development Department regarding its progress and performance on meeting the housing and community development priorities that were listed and approved in the five-year consolidated action plan. And so this report, which is called the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, which is also known as the CAPERS, pretty much outlines the city's actual accomplishments for the second program year of the city's five-year actual action plan. Specifically, our city received $3,598,406 in CDBG and ESG funds. And although the funds were invested in the City of San Bernardino, a significant portion were contributed towards public facility street improvements in an amount of $743,094.61 and the city's Section 108 repayment program in the amount of $772,322.50. And these two programs combined accounted for 83% of our CDBG allotment for the program year. With that said, 100% of our home funds were expended for first-time homebuyer programs, and the majority of our ESG funds were spent on homeless shelters in the City of San Bernardino totaling $175,028.41, which accounted for 61% of the total amount expended in the program year. With that said, moving forward, the city now has a fully-staffed housing division, and policies are in place to hold subrecipients accountable. The city has made provisions to receive monthly data statistical reports from our subrecipients, so that moving forward with our next year's CAPERS report, it will be easier to obtain the necessary, the necessary information that we need to submit a report, so. Without further ado, the staff is available for comments if there are any questions by council.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ibarra?
Yes, one quick question, Cassandra. For the ESG, then, they weren't able to, nobody was able to provide the city with any reports of who they assisted?
Yeah, and full transparency, I think, due to staffing capacity with the housing division, and the fact that there were no reports that were submitted monthly on a regular basis. When it came time for the consultant to assist with the CAPERS report, there was just a lack of information, so we have provisions in, in place to make sure that doesn't happen moving forward with the next year.
Okay, so this will be okay with the CAPERS, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our independent consultant is Annie Flores?
Well, Annie Clark is a paid consultant for the city, but then we also have Michael Baker International, that's the paid consultant to help develop the CAPERS report.
Are they tasked with providing that retroactive retrospective report to you? That they failed to report?
They were only able to put in the report data that was collected by the city, and without having proper staffing in the housing division, the reports that should have been collected on a monthly basis by the subrecipients was not.
Does that pose a pay due later?
No, it does not.
Okay.
For the city, yeah, no.
All right. Ms. Calvin?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Circe, where it says, expand home ownership, affordable housing, 625,000 first-time homebuyer buyers, families assisted 50. When, when did we do this? So the city, in the previous year, 2021, early part of 2022, the city had agreement with HPI, with HPI Housing Partners, Inc., and then also a current agreements in place with MPHS, Neighborhood Partnership Housing Services.
And so we were able, I'm sorry, I just didn't recall seeing these funds being expended. We were able to, 50 folks in this city where this money was given assisted them $625,000 for 50 families. Do you have information on those 50 families?
Do I have information? No. The information was collected over the past fiscal year 2021, 2022. But this was, again, prior to my arrival here with the city.
So who would I get that information from? Do you know, or can you request that information?
I can request that information.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, is there a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve.
Any members, I'm sorry, any members of the public wishing to address the council on this? Any speaker slips? Okay. It's now 10:32 PM. We'll close this hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right. Members, cast your votes, please.
Motion passes. Six votes in favor.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number seven, Community Facilities District 2021-1, Ferry Street, 2022, special tax bonds. The time is about 10:33 PM. I now open the public hearing. Can I please get a staff report on this item?
Mayor, city council members, my name is Marnol Shah. I serve as bond counsel. I'm with Best Bestin Krieger for this financing. Before you tonight, you will be considering a resolution that will authorize the issuance of bonds within CFD number 2021-1. The CFD is located south of Sycamore Lane between Ferry Street and Richardson. It's proposed to be developed to 97 single-family homes. The maximum principal amount of the bonds is $4 million, and the not-to-exceed amount for the interest rate is 6.75%. The value to lien exceeds three to one for the property as of the date of value of the appraisal. It was in excess of $30 million. Before you tonight, you will be approving the forms of the fiscal agent agreement, which sets forth the terms and conditions under which the bonds will be issued and monies will be distributed. The bond purchase agreement sets forth the terms and conditions under which the bonds will be sold to the underwriter. The preliminary official statement sets forth the material information that investors will need in order to make an educated decision on whether or not to purchase the bonds. And the continuing disclosure certificate sets forth the city's ongoing disclosure responsibilities. I am available for any questions, and we also have Adam Pope with Columbia Capital that can assist with questions, and my colleague Daniela Hernandez.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any requests to speak? Does anyone wish to speak on this item?
We did not receive any requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. I am now closing the public hearing at 10:35 PM for deliberation and action. Do we have a motion?
Yes, second.
Motion by Councilmember Charette, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez. Any questions? Nope. All right, then I'll ask for the vote, please.
Motion passes 6-2-1 with Councilmember Reynoso voting in opposition.
Thank you very much. Next, item number eight. I'm opening the public hearing at 10:36 PM. Could I please, could we please get a staff report on this item?
Thank you. Mayor Protem, members of the city council, I'm Dave Murray, city planner. The item before you this evening is a consideration of a property tax exchange agreement for the annexation of the Mountain View Avenue Bridge over the Santa Ana River into the city of San Bernardino and detachment from the city of Redlands. Currently, the bridge that is being proposed for annexation is split halfway down the center line by the boundary of the City of San Bernardino and Redlands. The bridge was constructed by an Inland Valley Development Agency. It was completed in 2021. They have requested the city annex that so that the entirety of the bridge is in one jurisdiction. So when there's necessary maintenance that needs to be done to the bridge, they just have to deal with one jurisdiction. The bridge is generally located south of San Bernardino International Airport and Central Avenue, north of Riverview Drive, and east of Tippecanoe. The annexation and detachment will adjust the boundary to include the entirety of the bridge, as I mentioned, and will also annex the property into the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District. This annexation dates back to 2013, when an MOU between the cities of San Bernardino and Redlands and the IVDA was approved and committed the city to supporting this annexation. IVDA currently retains the ownership, maintenance, and inspection responsibilities for the bridge, the structure itself, and is committed to continuing maintenance going forward. Really, this is just a 6.27 acre annexation, generally the bridge and the area underneath the bridge. It's all undevelopable land. So really, the services provided to that area are minimal. Just as part of the annexation, we have to prepare a plan for services that demonstrates the city can provide municipal services to the annexation area at a level equal to or greater than the services currently provided by the other jurisdictions, which that's attached to your staff report, and the city can fully take on that responsibility with really no cost. And as part of a LAFCO application on behalf of IVDA, the city must provide that plan for services and the property tax exchange agreement. In this case, because the land is all undevelopable, there is no property tax to collect, so there's a zero property tax exchange agreement, and that's what you'll be approving this evening, and that's a staff recommendation.
Thanks. Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak? Does anyone wish to speak on this item?
We did not receive any.
Okay, thank you. I'm now closing the public hearing at 10:39 PM for deliberation and action. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it with a question.
Councilmember Charette.
We're going to annex that in. There's no developable property, so there's not going to be any real cost to us at all, other than if the bridge falls down and we own it, who fixes it?
So IVDA will continue to maintain and own a bridge?
They're asking us to, so that they don't have to deal with two entities if there's any maintenance issues.
If they have to close down the road.
But we're not going to be liable for any maintenance of it if it gets damaged or flooded or whatever.
That's correct, and Public Works will be following up shortly with a maintenance agreement with IVDA to ensure that.
Thank you. Move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Ibarra. Any other questions? Nope. Then we'll proceed to the vote, please.
Motion passes 5 to 2 with Councilmember Reynoso and Calvin voting in opposition.
Thank you. At this time, we will transition to the consent calendar, I believe, right? Am I on the right path here?
Yes.
Okay. We'll start off with Councilmember Sanchez. Any polls?
No polls.
Councilmember Ibarra?
No poll.
I don't have any polls, but I'll be, I want to register my vote for number 16 as a no. Councilmember Charette?
No.
Councilmember Reynoso, any polls?
No polls.
Councilmember Calvin?
Sorry about that. No polls.
Nope. And Councilmember Alexander, any polls?
I just have a question.
Please proceed.
No polls. I just have a question on number, item number 20. Whenever the city manager or whoever is responsible for number 20, I'm sorry, it's just a question. It's the usual question that I ask every time I get up here, because local vendors, City of San Bernardino, and alls we are, whoever's responsible, whatever director is responsible, is yes. It's the same old question, and you're going to hear the same old song, local vendor preference, getting stuff in vendors that are local. And this was just a simple maintenance contract. And the question is, we couldn't find nobody in a city of 230,000 people, a business, that could provide maintenance in the City of San Bernardino? Somebody, anybody?
This agreement is for maintenance of landscaping in and around police facilities, two specifically.
Yes, sir.
Police headquarters and the shooting range. I don't see anybody here from PD right now to represent the basis for the recommendation for the award.
They chose?
But it was, I'm sorry?
PD chose?
It was, they were involved in the solicitation for this, yes. The issue is that we're doing landscaping in secure areas that are outside, that are outside the norm. It's the shooting range. It's the, it's inside the fence at the police headquarters. So they are around weapons and other, and, you know, expended and unexpended ammunition, other sorts of things.
Where's PD?
They were here before. They're not here at the moment. If we need to continue this for them to come out and have a conversation.
Once again, local vendors, this is a simple maintenance contract. We're not asking for rockets, you know, scientists and engineers and Alex Kishdas and Daniels and all that. No, that's it. Never mind. Never mind, city manager.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, and a second, my Charette. Cast your votes, please.
Yes, so consent passes unanimously with the exception of item 16. Mayor Protem is voting in opposition.
These, the next item, thank you, council. The next item is items to be considered for future meetings. Can we take them in well-fell swoop, or do we need to individually, if it's your pleasure?
No, individually.
Okay. Item number 26, please. Mr. Alexander, sir?
It's item number 27. And it's just, how can we get Lydia and her public work staff and the rest of the city behind, the City of San Bernardino behind Route 66? Maybe we can do one day or something like that, a Friday evening, to continue to grow this particular event.
Most to approve.
Second.
Okay, this is item number 27. My apologies. Yes, it was 27. It was a motion to add it to a future calendar. And a second, members, cast your votes.
Take a voice vote on this one. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item number 28, process for renaming Second Park, Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, parks and monuments, monuments are built and parks are named after people who conducted themselves in a way that inspires all of us and something that we want to reach out and be. So I think it's come time for us to consider renaming Second Park from, you know, it was named Second Park after our former mayor here in San Bernardino. And there's someone that comes to mind. I'll wait till this item comes before the council as a whole, but I have a good ideas of what I'd like to see come forward, and I'd like the council to consider renaming that park.
Most to approve, for sure.
Oh, second.
Cast your votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 29, establishing a citywide neighborhood watch program. Ms. Ibarra?
Yes, I, before I became elected, I became a neighborhood watch block captain, and it helped bring safety into the neighborhood where I live. I think it would be nice for us to come together and support it as a citywide program. We have constituents in the city that don't feel safe in the city, and that, to me, worries me. If they have a safe place to go to, to, you know, just stand against the crime, I think it would help alleviate a lot of the crime happening in our communities, bring people together instead of keeping people at home scared for their own lives. So I'd like to propose the citywide neighborhood watch with the support of our police department as well. No, the neighborhood watch blocks that I know, they are pretty much by themselves.
Ms. Ibarra?
We are standalone neighborhood watch watchers.
Ms. Ibarra, the City of San Bernardino has and supports neighborhood watches via the instrument and expression of our police department. So I'm trying to find out, what are you trying to establish here? Because one already exists.
I was not aware it existed, because I know we have a block captains association that's not active, and that was the only...
Our police department has operations and supervision of our neighborhood watch program already. So why don't, why don't we do this? Can you, can you cross-pollinate with PD and?
Yeah, they want to cooperate already, but it's been years.
So, why?
Flip it on and talk about it again.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion for approval?
Yeah.
I'm trying to, but...
I guess nobody wants people to feel safe in this city.
There's no motion. All right, for lack of support, the item is not supported. Item number 30, providing appointed commissioners a per-meeting stipend. Ms. Calvin?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second.
Yeah, would you, would you consider a friendly amendment to also include discussions of the various commissions we have, and if we need to add commissions, reduce the number of commissions, and kind of vet all the commissions? We haven't done that in a long time, and I think it's important that we take a look and see which are important. Yeah, we need to look at it globally.
That's, that would be fine, providing that we're still having the discussion to provide a stipend.
Absolutely. Yes, motion.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, cast your votes on item number 30.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 31 is to initiate a request for proposal, seeking a consultant to prepare a feasibility study for electronic trolley system. Councilmember Reynoso?
Yeah, there was a lot more to this request than the idea here. Just like any of the other items I've requested, I don't expect it to come back anytime soon, but I would expect if it is approved that it would come back with placeworks, kind of like their downtown study, just to visit it, because I think we all share a sentiment that SBX is a model of what not to do, and I think something that's very attractive for a downtown. I know like in cities like New Orleans, San Francisco, et cetera. I'm thinking like just our downtown, like all the way through our buildings and stuff. But this is long-term. I won't feel any type of way of no one, motions to approve, but I would like to see something like this in the future in our downtown. And so this is me gauging the realistic timeframe on which it would come back, which I may not even be during this term.
Okay, there's a motion by Reynoso. Is there a second?
My concern here is that, you know, we can go ahead and get a consultant. They're going to charge us $150,000, and they're going to say it's going to cost you $30 million a year to run this operation. I think I trust my staff, and, well, I think staff can go out, survey a couple cities where they have downtown transportation. They can come back and say, hey, this is what they've shown us. What do you think, council? Do you want to continue to pursue this and spend $100,000 in a consultant, $150,000 in a consultant? But I think staff can look at it for minimal cost to the city, because I really do expect. I sat on OmniTrans for a while, not Omni, yeah, OmniTrans, OmniTrans for a while, and they, it's very, very expensive to have any sort of transportation system, and...
No, I agree totally. And the intention here wasn't to bring on more consultants. So if we're going to make a motion to that effect, to have city staff?
Yeah, that's fine.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, is there?
Move to approve.
Move, and a second. Great. Cast your votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.